Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, May 25, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. We are going to go right into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. As the Chair has determined that an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the town's litigation position in a matter involved in the town of East Bridgewater versus Malden Real Estate Development, LLC. We will be returning to reopen the meeting after our executive session is completed. Roll call, Dave Sheedy.
You're just going junior vice chair.
Carol Julius.
Thank you, we'll be back shortly. Everyone stand and pledge allegiance to the flag with me, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now open the open forum portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here for open forum? You are? Seeing no one, we'll close open forum. Our first appointment, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Looney, welcome.
Thank you. Here to plan for our annual town meeting, and apparently special time meeting, I will say I just saw the warrants today, first I just picked up here. So what we do here in our pre-town meetings, just go over the articles, see if anyone has any concerns about them. We cannot discuss the content of the articles, because that's what town meetings for. But we can discuss procedural aspects of them. So, Mr. Purcell, my name is Bob Looney, this is our first time meeting. Pleased to meet you, I like, I guess you set these up, I appreciate the work.
Everybody else did the work, she did the setup.
I know she does.
I've been basically a bystander.
If no one's sitting beside me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shun the mask. For the record, I'm fully vaccinated, even though you can't ask me. Procedurally, that's actually the question. The state is lifting their mask mandate on Saturday. Previous town meetings, past two we had, we did do masks. I personally don't care. I'm gonna leave it up to the individuals. They have it, I don't think they're gonna do any other classifications for indoor. But large groups of people can get together now as of May 29th. So whatever you feel, whatever the people feel comfortable doing as far as masks, that will be up to them. There will be no mask shaming. I think, you know, I think they've done a good job, that they have moved it up to this Saturday. So we will leave it up to individuals at the town meeting. We are not requiring masks. I do not expect anyone to police anything to do that. We didn't police them when the masks were mandated, and I don't think it's the job of the police to tell people to wear masks, I think it's a personal preference. So that's, procedurally, that's the important thing. I don't know if anyone has any feelings on that, but I do think it's up to the individual people, whether or not they want to wear masks. There is a belief that if you're not fully vaccinated, but again, we cannot ask, and people do not have to tell us. So we will leave it up to individuals and the masks. On that, we can just get right into Article 1, which is, again, we just, these are just, you know, the first few articles, the standard articles we have every year. I did notice, oh, we're actually passing over Article 1, so we don't have to do anything with that. So that means we're not gonna act on it. Article 2 is a DPW, and that's gonna be presented by Mr. Haynes. It's a majority vote required, so hopefully we do that by a voice vote. Anybody in here can stop when they want to figure any questions about any of the particular articles. Again, they can't be discussions about the body, but more about procedural. Article 3 is gonna be by Chief Haron from the Fire Department, again, a majority vote. Article, and these, these just are different, must be for, well, actually, that's to cover a deficit, and Article 4 is to deal with some purchase of police equipment, it's gonna be presented by Chief O'Brien, that's a majority vote. Article 5, again, I do see in my book here, there's some blank things. Are we waiting to see where that's coming from, or do we have that?
That's a passover.
Oh, I should read that big block that says passover on it. Whatever, you just get it, so we don't have to worry about that, or you don't have to present that one. Article 6 is by the town accountant, but do we have a town accountant? It can be presented by somebody in selectman.
We do have a town.
Oh, okay, I thought we were in the market for a town accountant at one time.
We are.
We are the market.
Our town accountant is still with us.
Are they a resident?
No.
All right, so that can be presented by one of you guys? Are you David?
I will.
Article 7 is gonna be presented by David. Article 6, I mean. All right. That's based on triads for our money. Article 7. Peter?
Yep.
That's by the Board of Selectmen. I guess an article, I guess not an article, but we're passing over two articles, or, I guess I'm trying to figure out what that last next page says.
Oh, that's the articles that we're passing over.
Oh, those are one of, oh, I see.
Article 1 and 5.
Yeah, all right, so just an explanation of it.
Yeah.
Let me go to the annual town meeting, obviously it's not a long, long town meeting, it's only 17 articles, it looks like. Article, Article 1 is a consent agenda, we just actually just get that, it's a whole bunch of stuff that the town has to do every year. They're just like the, these are, and they have a lot of consent agenda over the past few years. We did do it last year, we used it. It takes a lot of annual articles that we do every single year and just pass them over one vote. If anybody wants a particular thing discussed, it's in their warrant, it's in the warrant, and we'll talk, if you need to, you talk about it at the meeting. But basically, it takes a lot of, like, highway things and stuff that we do every single year. Seventeen years I've been doing it, we finally got smart and decided to do this consent agenda last year. Article 2, which is the budget. I do see my moderator's salary hasn't risen yet in 17 years. You guys get in a bargain. So that's gonna be the Finance Committee. I will say, I'm not sure who the Chair is right now.
Laura Sebastian.
All right.
But it'll probably be presented by Dan, right? Because Laura isn't available.
Yes, Dan's nodding his head.
Oh, you're gonna, all right.
Dan Pico.
Yep, no, I just believe, all right, so that's gonna be presented by them, this is, again, a majority. This is the big item of the night. Article 3. Who's the Chair of the Capital Budget? Is that?
Michelle LaHern.
So she'll be presenting that. I think I would know that, I think I pointed that. Board of Selectmen, Article 5, Carol.
Sure. That's part of the consent agenda.
Oh, oh, I see you have a group in here somewhere.
Yeah, 4 and 5, so it's.
All right, so, so we got 1, 5, 4, 1, 4, 5. Let's go to 6 then, because 6 isn't part of it. Is that gonna, we'll have that, Carol, it's a treasurer.
Okay.
7 is part of the consent, it's one of those yearly annual things. 8 is part of the consent, it's one of the yearly annual things. 9, go back to David. On the, on Article 9, David. Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Article 10 is gonna be Peter. Board of Selectmen. Article 11, so Article 10 is the transfer of funds. Article 11. This is, this is a inter-municipal agreement for, for some type of recycling and regional cooperation of solid waste. Carol. Article 12, we have to take care of our retiring employees, David. Article 13 presented by the Fire Department, it's gonna be by Chief Haron. All right. Article 13, Article 14. It's either zoning, this is zoning change, or, for the record, as you know, I'm Chairman of Zoning Board of Appeals, however, we do not participate in these discussions, this is a planning board. I spoke, Roy Garten had to leave, I met with him. Chair of Planning Board, he's gonna be presenting, he's actually gonna be presenting the next four articles. So Article 14 is outdoor dining, which obviously we allowed, yeah, without any zoning thing as part of the COVID, and I think it's, seems to have proven to be successful. I have visited one or two of the establishments. Article 15 has to do with zoning, it has to do with what's needed for some downtown, we have, we have downtown district. Again, Roy Garten is gonna be presented, so zoning requires, for the, for the, procedurally requires a two-thirds majority. I have the, I have the right to call a two-thirds vote as if it's successful or not, if not, we then have to count. Under the law, the moderator can declare a two-thirds based on what he hears. We will do a voice vote, I know Abington last night had their town meeting, they didn't because of COVID. But they, they were before the changes. Article 16, one everyone wants, no, it's a marijuana, like a bylaws for marijuana, that's gonna be presented by Roy. It's a very lengthy motion. I presume he'll do it as printed, and so you should take time to read it. And Article 17, is again, part of the marijuana bylaws, and we, and Massachusetts bylaws, and that'll be presented by Roy. And then again, the consent agenda, at the end, just explain which ones we passed over. And that's it, looks like it could be a quick, quick night, but we will not cut anyone off. If anybody wants to discuss at that meeting, feel to make sure you do, we'll give every opportunity, I'll give every opportunity for people to hear their views on any article they wish. Any questions?
Not seeing any.
Okay, does anybody have anything that they want to ask about as far as procedurally? In that case, I will say that my presentation is done.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Moderator.
See everybody June 7.
The weeks.
June 14.
You can be there, June.
You're gonna be all by yourself if you're on the 7th.
You know, I thought it was the 7th, because we usually do these two weeks ahead. And again, I, you know, it's been such a funny year, I, you know, we usually do this on a Monday night, and we do this on a Tuesday today, so. June 14th, we're one of the latest ones in town, in the state, I understand. We gotta wrap it up.
Because we're the best.
I'd like to think so, David. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yep, take care.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
If anybody wants warrants or motions to hear. All right, Chris. I don't blame this guy, you know.
Madam Clerk, let's go into tonight's action items.
Are we ready to move on them? Yes? All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and post the annual and special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the Southeastern Regional Service Group DPW Supplies Contract Award Sheet commencing July 1, 2021, for a 12-month period.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Haynes, wanna talk about this? Okay. Do we get a discount for 24 years, or any?
Essentially, group discount.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve for the Police Department and DPW to construct a 10-by-10 kennel structure with a paver-type base at the K-9 Handler's home.
Second.
Chief O'Brien.
Yeah, it's just part of the requirements for the K-9 handler, gets a 10-by-10 pen, and if we put in 2x2 cement blocks, it'll give drainage, and the DPW's offered to help us get the land ready.
Thank you. Again, it's a great idea to finally have our own K-9 in town. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agreement for engineering services buying between the town of East Bridgewater and Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc., subject to special town meeting funding.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Spigot.
Yeah, so this is the second agreement of two. We had a feasibility study that was done on the quarter from, on Route 18, from the Whitman Line to Highland Street, and a little bit thereafter. We've got a letter of intent from the city of Brockton for some storage in that area, about 300 acres. We will be at town meeting to get the money appropriated, we just signed the agreement prior to that.
Thank you. Again, appreciate it. Effort on everyone's path to get these agreements going. Long overdue. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11, 2021, 6:30 p.m. Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the May 11, 2021 Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion for a memorandum of understanding signing with the Clerical Union.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Purcell.
Mr. Chairman, the court's contract expires on June 30 of this fiscal year. Understanding the transition, the administrative transition that's, that's taking place here, the court's union broached the subject with the, with the town, and we embraced the concept of a one-year extension. So the terms of the MOU are really very basic, very simple, Mr. Chairman. The term of the contract is extended for one full fiscal year with a 2% cost of living allowance built in.
Thank you very much, and thank the Clerical Union for looking ahead to this, and thank you to Mr. Purcell for all your help and implementiveness, and hopefully we'll have other unions follow suit.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from Corin Ziegler of East Bridgewater Community Gardens for the use of the Sation Rock Farm for a ladybug release party. Ten kids with one parent will release beneficial live ladybugs into the gardens. All participants will follow state and local COVID-19 guidelines. Event will be June 23, 2021, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Rain date is June 24, 2021.
Second.
Question.
I think that sounds like a great, I have a ladybug tattoo on the back of my neck. It's on my neck.
Nope.
Carol, is it open to the public?
It sounds like it, but I would say get in touch with East Bridgewater Community Gardens, or maybe Rebecca can find out.
Some events are open, some aren't.
And it says under a local COVID-19 guidelines, but there won't be any, right? COVID-19 guidelines then, so.
Any further discussion besides your tattoos? All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the settlement agreement between the town of East Bridgewater and Malden Real Estate Development, LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? This is an agreement, we were in the executive session, fought to finalize the agreement, and it will be forthcoming, we'll sign it, and then turn it over to the town council. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, that is the end of our action items.
Thank you, well done, madam.
Thank you.
Mr. Purcell.
Two quick items, Mr. Chairman. And one is very timely, given the meeting, what do you call the opening East Bridgewater Committee, a meeting, there's a meeting tomorrow morning in anticipation of the lifting of certain mandates under the Governor's Emergency Order. The Governor's Emergency Order itself is slated to expire on June 15. There is the matter of, in the Governor filed today, some legislation that would, because without the emergency order, he doesn't have standing to allow, for instance, cities and towns to continue to suspend certain open meeting law requirements, extend timelines on special permit filings, you know, there are statutory time periods that applicants and boards must follow. Outdoor dining, you know, allowing that sort of thing to continue. Again, once the order is over, the Governor lacks the authority to, you know, to allow you to continue to do that. And so the, it requires legislative authority. I imagine certainly these things will go through and, you know, and warp speed, and certainly not by tomorrow morning's meeting for our own planning, for our own reopening planning, but, you know, this is a, this is a timely thing, and I think we'd all like to see what the details of it are. Outdoor dining is something that this board, you know, has to, has regulatory authority over, so let's see what, let's see what comes up. And also, from the, from the federal government, the announcements have been made on what, under the ARPA Act, what the municipal allocations would be. East Bridgewater's was posted late this morning, and it, it's a little more than $1.5 million. The news we're getting out of the Mass Municipal Association is that those who operated under the CARES Act with county, with counties administering them, they're, I think they're gonna replicate that for the, for the ARPA Act. So you're likely to see Plymouth County involvement in any activities that we take here. Rules have not been made yet, okay?
Shocking.
Well, but there's a lot of anticipation going on out there, and I just question, or I caution everyone, just slow down, okay? Let's, let's see what the rules say before you go spending money you may or may not have, okay?
The AIP is the American Rescue Plan, it's basically the CARES Act number two.
Right.
Thank you for those updates.
Right.
Rebecca.
I'll get this warrant posted on the website, hopefully tomorrow, so it'll be available reviewing, and I don't really have anything else. Special time meeting Monday, June 14, and the next night, we'll meet again.
We meet again.
And at that meeting, Mr. Chairman, I think you'll be meeting, you'll meet jointly with the Finance Committee to entertain year-end transfers.
Oh, that's right.
So that'll be a big night for a lot of departments, and I know Phyllis has been working on it pretty hard, so.
Great. Four discussions. We have, look at the liaison we had last year. Does anyone have any changes, or do you want to maintain this the way it has been over the last year? Up to you, if you have, from me.
Could absorb it and wait till next meeting to decide.
It's up to you.
I'm good with it, I was just, I had been approached by Nicole Kelleher on Arts Council to ask if I could take that as my liaison, since she and I had worked together before. So Peter, I know that one's yours, and I don't know if you could go in there, we go?
This is better.
Yeah, you have a lot, so I don't mind taking that one.
All right, we'll leave it at that, we'll remain different, remain the same as we have on this past year, and through the pandemic, and if there are any changes, then we'll address those on that meeting.
All right. Mr. Chairman, through you, I think we have some residents from Rolling Hills, is that where we're at? And I believe that they may have spoken to Rebecca.
No, there's been a couple messages about road acceptance. Are you Nancy?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
Through you, I, so this has been a big discussion, I'm sure, and I think it's a discussion, not with any commitment from the board, but at least a discussion that we've had numerous times over the years regarding the accepted roads. I was at the meeting back two weeks ago, I guess, when Fieldcrest Drive, I think I told you, came to the planning board where this actually belongs, because they obviously have been working on trying to get a resolution to this situation. I think the concerns are obviously not just the acceptance of the roads, but the roads' conditions themselves. I have expressed, I know I talked to Ms. Piesco a few weeks ago, I guess, prior to tonight's meeting, and she has made some contact to, to the Selectmen's office. I think it'd be wise to at least give them an update on the EP contract that we vented into, I think that's gonna play a major role in having an invite, in an engineering firm that will, you know, will incorporate, finally, this project as a whole. I don't know if you want to go into some of that detail to at least give them some knowledge to that, or?
I can go to some of it, John Haynes is here, if he could help me out a little bit here on, on what's happening with these. We've had discussions over the years, because we have, I can't remember the last count, Rebecca, do you remember how many, we have like 23 streets?
Sure, I'm happy to contribute some to this conversation. Again, as Peter mentioned, the process of roadway acceptance actually happened, begins with the planning board. It's a process that at the end of the construction of the subdivision, when the project's built out, it then goes through a legal process of recording, again, planning board approves that, recording, signs off on it, it's then submitted to the, in typical fashion, it would then be submitted to the Board of Selectmen to be placed on an annual warrant. At the annual town meeting, the town then accepts it as a public way. At that point, it goes into the registry with Mass Department of Transportation, who then make it a Chapter 90 eligible roadway, which then allows for both state funding and local funding to be expended on the roadway. That's the way the process is supposed to work.
However?
The town of East Bridgewater has 84 miles of roadway under a responsibility of maintenance. The, approximately only 64 of those are accepted ways. So this is a project that I've been working on, trying to, to the extent that it can be worked on at the public works level, because we actually are the ones who inherit the road at the end of the project, you know? Once the road accept, once the community or town accepts the way as a public way, it then becomes the jurisdiction of public works. Legally, and this is a kind of a gray area, well, it's not a gray area, actually, it's not a gray area at all, and I think Mr. Purcell could, in your experience with other communities, could help. It's actually, the, the town is not supposed to spend any municipal funds on an unaccepted way, which is a, is a shared frustration.
Because Rolling Hills is not a.
Rolling Hills is an unaccepted street, so it's never gone through the process to be moved.
Even though the buses come down, it's plowed.
It's plowed.
Is it considered a private way?
It's considered an unaccepted way, it's not a private way. If it was a private way, it would be owned.
By?
By, it would have been constructed and built with the intention of being owned by the residents who live on that street. It was never that intention. The intention was that it, the process should have worked its way through, and this is previous to me, because now Rolling Hills and Fieldcrest Landing, River Road, I can go on, there's, again, there's 25-plus miles of unaccepted way.
But in 2018, I started calling you. I was promised that Rolling Hills Drive was going to be next year. 2019, nothing happened, they patch, no offense, the patches are worse, made it 10 times worse. 2020, they said, okay, well, COVID has hit, we can't hit you. I've been promised two years in a row, we would be done. This year is the first time that I was told that we were not a designated road in the town, which makes, I know the bond wasn't paid, and that's something that needs to be fixed, but. fixed, but it's not a matter of fixing up to make it look nice, which it should because we're all taxpayers. It's dangerous. I have sent countless numbers of pictures of the potholes, the buses coming in, going around these potholes. If I was told in 2018 that this was because it was not a state-owned, a town-owned road, I would have started this back then. But now all of a sudden, this year, it's a whole different situation and I don't.
And I will, we have been working on this process on, on multiple fronts, through multiple town clerks, multiple members of planning board, multiple engineering consultants, and the process just does not come together. So to Peter's point, the hope is now by having a comprehensive engineering firm who have experience in moving these projects through, we can do this.
John, are they looking at all of the streets that are?
Yes, so, so we're gonna, and I, again, Peter, this, this conversation really shouldn't be taking place at the planning board level, because they will be the ones who identify what streets come before the town first.
This has been 34 years that, you know, my cellar hole, my name is Howard Bourne. I had four Rolling Hills. My cellar hole was the first one dug in the entire Rolling Hills neighborhood, so I've been there since day one. And it's 34 years old. The town, the, the street has taken a beating. As Nancy said, there are multiple potholes, some deep.
The street was actually never corrected, never properly constructed.
I don't doubt that in the least.
You see the two colored roads?
I was there before the blacktop went down and I watched that and I said, this is really...
So, so I, again, I share your frustration, because I've been working on trying to get, this is, this is a multi-layered situation, because every year that the road isn't accepted is, is funding that the town loses at the state level with Chapter 90, which is primarily what the town uses for our roadway maintenance. For the last several years, we have been able to offset that with local funds, but primarily our maintenance plan is based on the $389,000 a year we currently get from Chapter 90. When I started in 2003, we actually only 40 miles of accepted way and we were able to get 20 or more accepted. Our Chapter 90 at that point went from $147,000 a year to 300-plus and now it's incrementally adjusted. So this is a, because to be honest, no one wants to have to take the phone calls that we end up with. And your, your street is a concern, a resident that I spoke to on Fieldcrest Landing, his street is a concern, a resident who lives at the end of River Road, their street is a significant concern, but legally, everything we've ever done there is questionable. Now, to your point, we sweep it, patch it, clean the catch basins, plow it, all under what I generally say as emergency maintenance, which if I were to have to go in front of a court of law, I can put my hand up and say, yeah, I think that's the right thing to do and nicely fine at night saying I do that. Is it legal? That, a question, you know?
Can I ask why it's taken 34 years to straighten out the, the issue with the bond?
That, I can't answer you that question. That's in a, not, not to, not to push us off, but that is dealt with in a, in a different department. Again, we're the department that kind of inherits the issue at the end of it. We would like to see every road constructed properly and accepted in a condition that is a benefit to the town. So what's going to happen now is when the town does accept it, we're going to have to spend a significant amount of funds, more so than anyone should have to, to make that road acceptable by any level of, you know.
Then why was it approved?
It was never approved.
Oh, okay.
That's, so what happened was that?
So someone just put a road in and?
So this is some, I'm, I'm being a little subjective here, but what happened with your particular subdivision was your developer came in, built the road that he needed to get in to build the houses.
Okay.
And then decided he wasn't going to finish it.
No, is, were there several builders? I don't think it was just one builder. Okay?
There was, and, and I was 13 at that time, so, you know, I have only gotten at this information through, you know, time dealing with these situations. So I've kind of, again, inherited it and have a general understanding, the particulars as to why these things happen. I don't think there's anyone in municipal government right now that could explain to you exactly why these things happen.
Okay, but someone had to approve it, right?
Um.
Because you had to just dig up a road, you know?
One of the biggest problems that we had back then is, first of all, we didn't require developers to give us a bond on the road. Once that came along, at that point, we were able to fix, because a lot of them just walked away, changed their company's name and took off somewhere else.
Yeah, start over.
And if we don't have any money at that point to finish the road, it just stays unaccepted. I think we're probably closer now, as Mr. Spilland said, with an engineering firm now, an entire engineering firm that specializes in each different thing that we need to do to be able to at least start attempting. We can't promise it's going to be done this year or next year, but I think this board, the next thing that we need to do as a board is to sit down with the planning board, with the DPW, and find out what is the quickest, fastest way. This engineering group can help us get to where we should have been a long time ago.
So is that the process that you have to hire an engineering group to come take a look at the roads and say, well?
We have now, we'll hire an engineering group for the entire town process.
Okay.
And that will be on their list. They're then, how do we get started, you know, and then with the, with the planning board, you know, with us, how do we go from, you know, the first mile to the 24th mile that we have to get accepted? And that's what, we, we say we will do that.
So you're saying this is three or four more years before this even gets?
I, I can't tell you how long the first process will start.
Who can? How do we go about as people that need this done, to go about to make this work?
That, I don't think, unless, there's nothing more that you can do. It's now the attention of us with not an engineer here, an engineer here, an engineer here. We have an entire engineering company with us now.
Uh huh.
And this will be one of the things.
Can they come out as a priority to Rolling Hills and look it over and put us on the list for when it ever happens?
It's not really, it's not to evaluate the condition of the road. This has nothing to do, this is all of the legally meets bounds as-built plans that then have to go through legal counsel and be recorded. This isn't, this isn't as much to do with the physical condition of the road. This is the legality of every single individual's deed and the way it should have been transferred over when the product, when the properties were sold. It has far more to do with, you know, the plans being recorded at the, in this case, it would be the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, then being moved as an accepted way at town meeting, a town meeting vote. So that the, it's more of a, the engineering is a huge component of it, because they're the ones who can put the plan together, which then the planning board can take action on approving. And then, once they approve it, we'll have to, the town will have to utilize legal counsel to actually go through the process of drafting the deed or as-built of the, the road, which then is submitted, recorded, and that then goes and is registered with Mass EOT. So it is, it's a.
Paperwork, I think.
It's a paperwork, it's a, it can be a lengthy process, but it also, depending on what documentation, what level of, what level the plans were at when the developer walked away, will determine on how difficult it will be to finish out the project to make it an acceptable public way, per, per legal standards. It has very, it has, the, the road could be pristine, it still has to go through the exact same process, whether it's a road that was just paved yesterday or built 45 years ago.
But it is a danger area. It is very dangerous to people that walk, to kids that ride their bikes, to buses that come in. It's not something that we're going to sit back and say, okay, another three, four years, because I don't believe it's going to even happen in another three or four years.
I agree with what you're saying, Nancy. I think, you know, it's frustrating to hear what you're saying, because I don't see construction happening for at least three or four, maybe.
It is frustrating and, and I don't want to, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you, oh, it's going to happen, because I would much rather sit here and tell you, this is the process, this is how it has to go through than to pretend that.
The condition of the road is horrific. The potholes, some of them are six inches deep and massive in size.
So you're waiting for an accident?
You have to actually walk around the potholes into the center of the street to get around them. The sidewalks have dips, bumps, cracks.
I don't mean to be inflammatory, but, and this is going to come across as an inflammatory statement that it's not intended to be, but right now the town doesn't own your road. So.
So who does?
Yeah.
You as homeowners.
Why do we pay taxes? Who's taking my field state taxes?
Who's taking the taxes?
You know, why are we paying taxes?
It's not an accepted road.
To fund your department jobs.
So are we going to get a dip on our taxes since our road's not owned?
No.
So, so dip, we shouldn't have to pay it at all.
If it's not accepted.
If it's not accepted. So this is a problem that we inherited. Chairman, if you'd allow me to elaborate a little bit. So there, there's a number of things that we feel, the board here felt, that needed to be corrected, not just on roads, but on, you know, the upstairs building, planning and zoning. I've been very vocal about what we felt the board in general needed to be done in order to get some of these problems, so to speak. I mean, it's, there's no secret, there's discussions out there on all different things that are going on in East Bridgewater that make it tough in certain areas. So the first thing that we took on was to find ways to fix those things legally, because when you get into municipality versus private business, it's apples and oranges. It's the most frustrating thing that I've seen, and I think both my, my two colleagues here will tell you, is, is timing to me is, is pathetic when, when it comes to municipal government. It just, that's just the thing it is. And what we've tried to do, John has been very helpful with, for me, the learning process of how to do this, is to find ways to correct these problems. Now, when we talk about EP, Environmental Partners, and the agreement that the town has, this is only one of probably 10 or 15 towns in the state of Massachusetts that have actually incorporated an, an engineering firm to encompass not just your problem and, and Fieldcrest's problem, but numerous things that we, we are struggling with. I can tell you this, I sat in on the planning board meeting with Fieldcrest, the same things are happening over there. They have a handicapped person that can't get out of their, front of their front door because of, because of issues they have over there. So we are certainly finding or talking about ways, and I've talked to him about John, some of those talks have been uncomfortable, and some of them have been straightforward where, you know, we have to find some way, any way we can, to, to rectify the situation. But I do understand that Environmental Partners, EP as we call them, and Scott Turner, who is our coordinator, we'll have one person that we go to, to coordinate any other of these projects, they have been made aware and have done this process before. The town of East Bridgewater tried to rectify this back in June. We went to town meeting, we had three properties, I believe, that we were looking at accepting. We had a town administrator who is, who's no longer with us that tried to do the process himself and it failed miserably. And what happened there is we, we understood that we have to be partnered with somebody that's done this process before and they have done it. And one of their first tasks will be to get this forward. We're meeting with them again next week, you know, and Nancy, if, if you'll, you know, be the liaison through the group, I'll certainly give you all the updates I can regarding what they believe the process will be, you know, through the chair, as long as he allows me to do that. And, you know, we'll find a way to rectify this problem, there's, there's no doubt. You know, I'm here for two more years. And I keep saying the same thing. You know, this is one of the problems that I feel like, you know, the board can, can come in and we've made the steps to get it going on. I heard the issues and I heard Mr. Gardner, the chairman of the planning board, speak to Fieldcrest Drive, and they said the same things you did. This isn't the first time we're here. We're here in 2017, we're here in 2019, and now you're telling us in 2021 that in, you know, EP, the environment, the engineering firm that you bring in is going to, you know, miraculously just take care of this problem?
Are they a town-owned road, Fieldcrest?
No.
No, they're, they're.
They have the same, it was the same discussion, but it was with the planning.
Yeah, and I want you to understand when, when we, so, and, and actually Dan sits on capital planning and Dan, not to sort of, but.
Or Dan.
No, Dan has seen that for the last seven years, we have submitted Rolling Hills on our capital plan and we, it keeps being moved out, from the public work standpoint. What, what has happened is the, and it's now caught this case law to show this, Middleburg being the closest community, that we cannot spend municipal or state funds on an unaccepted way. So we, so that, it's still on the plan. It's on the plan for next year. I mean, if the road stays on the plan until we can legally, you know?
How long does it take to get a road to be owned by the town? What, how?
Do I get a rough estimate?
Yeah, so, we, we spoke to Scott Turner here, sitting right in this room right here. He told us he needed to look at what the roads were that we were looking to accept. You know, there will be obviously a, a list of roads that we give them. Rolling Hills was one of the ones that came out of Mr. Gardner's mouth, along with Fieldcrest, and I believe is, is Sachem on there too?
Yep, this is Sachem Rock.
Yeah, I believe that was there, there was four of them that were on there and you, you were definitely on the, on the list for that, I can tell you that. Again, we're talking about a contract that's sitting here in my hands that has just been signed by, by this very aggressively working board, so we look forward to sitting down with them and I will get back to you. And Nancy, I, you know, reached out back to you as, as many times as you, you've reached to me, so I will get back to you, hopefully within the next 10 days, if not sooner. A time patent that we'll ask them to work on to get this, get this problem solved, you know?
I have a question, sorry, Mr. Chairman asked, Peter, is there, I know that there's 20 some odd miles, and I know that, or I think my understanding before was with the former town administrator, he was sort of trying to identify like easier roads to do and like do those first. But is there a way where we can, if we're, assuming they don't sort of all go through the same process, so they're not all going to be approved at the same time, is there a way that we can prioritize, you know, these communities where we have a large number of residents and the roads are in bad conditions versus a road that might be in pristine condition with only a few people?
We have a.
And do we have a commitment from the engineering firm that that will be a priority?
And we tell them.
So that we can at least give you that assurance?
We direct, yeah, we direct the firm. We have a, we have a pavement management.
My husband drives a school bus on your way.
Plan.
I don't.
We have a, we have a pavement management assessment that's been done of the entire town and it's, and it's all 84 road miles. So, and it's broken out into accepted way, unaccepted way, and each, each segment of road within every 100 feet has a road rating, they're all calculated. So we have that to utilize as well when you, when you want to look at road, general road condition. But the, I think what I would prefer to do, and I think the board is, there's a benefit not only to, there's an obvious benefit to addressing the larger subdivisions, because that's where there are more homes, there's more residents paying taxes, and I think they deserve, you know, perhaps, not, not more, every resident deserves the same.
Level.
Level of, but, you know, there's something to be said for 100 homes on a street versus, you know, four. But as long as the roadway condition is in alignment with the overall area, I think there's a general benefit too, because as soon as we get that road accepted, we begin to get reimbursement for the road. So there's a much greater, you know, from public work standpoint, we want every mile of road accepted, so that we not only can maintain it, but we get funding to maintain it at the state level. So there's been no funding received for the 34-plus years that that road has been in existence and to whatever level the town has, you know, whether it's acceptable or not, has swept it, patched it, cleaned the catch basins, you know, plowed the snow. There's been no reimbursement coming back from the state, which, so those are all dollars plus.
So the state won't give any money to these types of roads?
No, the state, the first thing, the first thing we do when we submit a, a road project request for Chapter 90 is they look on their list and say, is this an accepted way or not? As soon as they tell you it's an, they kick it right back, because it's an unaccepted way.
Well, then just put us on that list.
I wish, that would be, and to be honest, we.
If it was that easy. 24 roads done.
Right, and my own ignorance was, I was under the impression that if we used local funds, we could address our local roads. And that may have been some of the misconceptions that were given to you, to individuals when they called. An unaccepted way from, from legal counsel to us now is, it is illegal to expend any municipal funds on an unaccepted. to expend any municipal funds on an unaccepted way. So that's why the effort is there to, you know, to address this in an aggressive manner.
Yeah, John, I, I spoke with someone recently that was on the Finance Committee and so forth, and that's, that's kind of what he told me, he says, money's been appropriated for that road years ago. Well, then that answers the question that we can't spend the money if it's not approved. But anyway, that, that's what he told me, that's why I was gonna ask you. You know, if the money was there, voted on years ago, why is it not being, you know, utilized?
So funds are allocated at the, in the capital, and then, you know, they've identified that, you know, our infrastructure is something we need to maintain, and, you know, they've made those difficult decisions to, to fund those projects. But, again, we thought because they were local roads, you know, we could use local funds, but.
I had another question. We're just talking about Rolling Hills right now. Um, Jacqueline Place, when was that built? When Rolling Hills was?
Yeah.
Were you including Jacqueline?
Yes, yeah, when I think, when I.
But that also not, I was gonna ask that, Susan's Place and Jacqueline, are they, are they approved?
Susan's Place actually is accepted.
Okay, that's what I thought, you're looking very nice.
That was my next one.
My driveway is out there, I wrote, I'm like, that's a nice smooth drive when I get on my driveway.
Susan's Place is an accepted way.
Well, my sister lives there, so I had to.
I thought Kamau did that.
How?
Legality, so Susan's Place was an extension of Rolling Hills, it was built after. And then it, it was done with the proper process.
Wow.
In place, and that's, so there was oversight, there was, and when the developer walked away, there was a bond left. And when the bond funds were left, we worked with the planning board. And how it works, I went in and oversaw the completion of that project. We utilized our contractors, we utilized our resources and had that road completed so that it wouldn't deteriorate for the.
Because you really can tell the difference between Susan's Place and Rolling Hills and Jacqueline's Place even.
It, it's also, that was ten or twelve years ago that we did that versus thirty-four years.
Right.
Payment will deteriorate over time. And if you get twenty years of life out of payment, that's, that's an acceptable period of time. But, so there has been, but that's how we were able to do Susan, and Susan's Place is an accepted public way.
Wasn't the same person, wasn't the same person that for Rolling Hills came for Susan's Place?
The way projects are phased, that Susan's Place came after, and, uh, so that, due to these very issues, because if you think about anyone that's lived in town for a long time, will realize that Rolling Hills, Fieldcrest, Saichem, um, Saichem Rock Gap were all built in the very same period of time. They were the late eighties.
Late eighties.
When this town grew.
Were they all same developer?
I was just gonna ask that.
Um, there was, there was a group of developers that built most of these subdivisions at the same time.
Okay, I'd like to, again, um, put this one in now. You can appreciate everything that's being said here. For the first time, it's the time that I've been involved in town anyhow, we've addressed the issue by bringing in a, a firm that's, this is what they do, okay? No one on this board, no one on the planning board and John can say, who is going to be first? As John says, we wanna get the big ones done first, for the big ones, where we get the mileage, to get reimbursement. But Peter will keep you connected, Nancy, and if you have any further questions, you can call the office. One of us will get back to you with Nancy very quickly.
Absolutely, thank you.
We have to bring the planning board into this, that's actually where we're at all starts. They will have to work very closely with EP.
So you don't suggest we go to the planning board? I was told this is where we start.
You start it here, we'll take it from here to.
Okay, so you don't wanna see from us again for a while?
Well, you don't wanna talk to Roy.
We have open forum at every meeting. Nobody ever comes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I add just, uh, just one thing? Um, I do have some experience, uh, with this. I was a, in my younger days, I was a planner, and I've been a manager for thirty-plus years and have, have worked in towns, uh, that had backlogs, not to this extent. I've never seen one, uh, uh, to this extent. But, um, I recall in one town that we worked over a period of about three or four years to get eleven streets accepted. I think once you, you go through the evaluation process of what it's gonna take to bring a, a road up to, uh, up to condition, I could envision possibly, uh, for you, um, uh, uh, town meeting warrant articles, uh, because ultimately roads get accepted by town meeting at two-thirds, uh, a, a vote of town meeting. The town, uh, in that vote would accept fee title to that, uh, to that right-of-way. What kind of condition are you gonna accept, publicly accept that road, uh, in? You have an accompanying article, separate article, for the money to fix it, and it's a contingent appropriation, contingent upon the town's acceptance of this as a public way. And so here's the, here's the set aside of eight dollars and thirty cents, so whatever the heck the, you know, the, uh, uh, the cost to bring this up to the standard that he'll ultimately, ultimately accept.
And I think that's been done in the past. Unfortunately, at that point, no, no one followed through to say, we can't do this, it's an unaccepted road.
But, two articles on the same warrant spaced properly, worded, you know, where the funding is on a contingent basis, you know, contingent upon town acceptance of the, of the way. I'm suggesting to you, Mr. Chairman, you can do it that way.
The, the eleven streets that were accepted, you know approximately how many miles that was?
Um, I do not. Um, uh, the town, you and I both, uh, uh, know some people there.
Okay.
Okay? Um, but, and in chapter ninety terms, just for, we talk shop all the time, we all know what chapter ninety is, just for the, you know, for the, for public, um, uh, information here. Chapter ninety of the Massachusetts General Laws. It is the transportation, uh, statute, the major transportation statute, and it covers planes and trains and automobiles and all sorts of things. One of the component parts of that is sending money collected at the pump in state gasoline taxes, okay? It's pooled, uh, by the state and distributed annually to cities and towns on a formula basis. Um, uh, the last decade or so, it's been two hundred million dollars a year that they distribute to cities and towns for road, uh, for road maintenance. That formula has three component parts. A town part, the town's population, uh, employment statistics in the town, um, in number of road miles. So the quest for somebody like John, not just for public safety purposes, in fairness to taxpayers, you know, to get those roads, uh, uh, back in the condition that they're in. Um, the number of road miles means you get a greater pro-rata share of that two hundred million dollars, you know, that's out there, um, uh, on a given basis. And John gave you an example of what the jump was, you know, once he did a few miles of, of roads. It seems, it, it seems it was a near doubling, uh, from the number I, the numbers I just heard you, uh, spell out. So, um, it's not as complicated as it, uh, is it really, uh, is it really seems. It's a lot of work, uh, to get it done, but I'm suggesting to you, Mr. Chairman, you know, if you take, you know, one step at a time, uh, you know, you've, you've just bolstered yourself with some, you know, professionals that'll, that'll help you determine those costs and, and help the Capitol Committee and everybody else make decisions on, you know, priority, you know, prioritizing these things. And then go to town meeting, and, you know, it'll take you, it'll take you a while, but, um, you can, you can do this. If the will is there, you can do it.
Speed the process up for us.
Yeah, well, we hope to have, uh, you know, just a, um, quick, um, note, we hope to have another town meeting, uh, before the end of the year for some zoning changes. So, if the process works that we can, you know, do something here at the same time, then, uh, you know, we would certainly incorporate this, this into it. Being so that, you know, I think the, the board knows that this is, uh, this is something that needs to be done like yesterday.
Yesterday.
And it takes money.
Three years.
Right, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll, as I said, so far, Malcolm, what we've been able to accomplish just in the last year, quite a few things that, uh, I think we're, we're very proud of. And this is, would be another nice, uh, opportunity to continue doing that and, and accept these roads, bring in some, some of the money for them and get them to where they belong, you know, as, as resident. You, you're, you're exactly right, and you're a taxpayer, and you deserve the same as any other person in, in the town. And the roads should be something you don't even think about. It's like, you know, the road fixed, end of story. So, so we're on it, I've got the, the information, we'll have a meeting with EP, and I will update you on exactly what the process looked, like, looked like for them in Free Town. And I think they said they did one somewhere else too.
Like, who?
Yeah, so they've, they've done the process and know what the, what the length of it is. And anything we can do to incorporate our help to speed that process up will certainly, certainly.
Can I add one more question, John? Um, I understand the financial situation and town responsibility and so forth, but right now, there's a hazard in, in that street with all those potholes and a tremendous amount of gravel that's kicked up out of these potholes. Is there anything that your department can do to come in and make, you know, do a little cleanup, some patching?
A patch that works?
The problem, the problem with patching a road like yours.
I, I know, it kicks out after a week or two or a couple months.
What happens is, the patch that goes in is good asphalt, but it goes in, or to an area where all the asphalt around it is bad. So it's not the patch that fails, it's the road is failing around the patch.
And also it's winter time when it usually gets patches.
And it doesn't, in the soil underneath the road is.
It's frozen and it cracks.
It wasn't constructed properly, so the, the, the road base, think about frosting on a cake.
Uh-huh.
So the cake gets spongy and the water, full of water, and then the road, the pavement cracks. Um, one of the issues we've had also is, we haven't had a street sweeper for two years. The street sweep is supposed to be delivered in June, and at that point, we'll be back out sweeping the streets. And that makes a huge difference as far as the appearance. Uh, it doesn't do anything structurally for the road, but it does clean it up, and it, it makes it, it, it certainly increases aesthetically appearances. And it also has some stormwater management things, because now those materials aren't draining into the, the catch basins, which then we have to come clean.
I think it was Peter that mentioned that there's somebody on Fieldcrest that was handicapped. My wife is handicapped.
I spoke to the individual who was there when the fellow fell out of his wheelchair.
She's.
Talked to him this morning. So we, these situations exist and, you know, they, you know, there's a, there's an equal frustration. And, you know, as I said, we're the ones who end up having to deal with it on the, on the, you know, trying to manage it when it was done improperly from the beginning. Um, we will continue to try and do the best we can to, to manage the situation.
Appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Truly funny, John, just, just last comment. Our road had taken a beating putting Susan's Place.
Right, right.
All the trucks, the concrete, the pounding and everything else, and that's been accepted for those in our assessment.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it burns.
How ironic is this, you know, doubly.
Frustrating.
Frustrating.
Yep.
That's it, this is just those.
I know, your hands are tied until they're all tied, I get it.
They're accepted and we aren't, and they, we took the beating, the building.
Wait, well, everybody that came from our neighborhood, when I hear, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you.
If you guys have a Facebook, you could have like a neighborhood Facebook page?
We do, we have one.
Rolling Hills Gang.
Okay.
I'm not on that.
Well, you should be like in charge of it from the sounds of it.
The chief of police is here, don't use that word, gang.
Rolling Hills Gang?
Yeah. Somebody, who's friends with her, send her.
I don't, I'm not friends with anybody.
There you go.
Me neither.
I will now accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Allo's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay on topic.
Thank you, everybody.